Smart, you're all smart. Alrighty. Let's begin. Welcome to the Village of Horsetts Board of Trustees Meeting. The date is Thursday, May 1st and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being livestream via Zoom, which can be accessed via the village's website at horsets.org. Also, this meeting is being recorded for posting to adhere to the recommendation of the New York State Committee of Open Governance. Please call the roll for attendance.
Deputy Mayor Goodwin.
Present.
Trustee Gross, absent. Trustee Kawawski.
Here.
Trustee Finipar.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. Please stand and join me in saying the pledge.
I.
I. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we move on to the public comment period. At this time, I welcome any person in attendance to approach the podium. If you so wish, please provide us with your name and address. As a reminder, this is for public comment, not a dialogue with board trustees. Additionally, the board asks you to limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Hi, Kansas City. I just wanted to comment on something that was mentioned at the last meeting. Um, I think that has been said over the years and not just this board, but other boards, um, that do like, um, more representation at the meeting from the community. Um, I think that would be awesome and great, but I know I for one, I can't attend every meeting. I had to pick and choose, have to schedule, not just be here tonight, but my whole week, just to be able to come to the meeting tonight. And to come through some. Cause it's just how life works.
Right.
So when the agendas are being made and things, um, you know, it's great to have the information to allow us to know, is that something I want to come and hear about? Is that something where I want to move around my schedule? Move things around to be able to attend. Um, so I just wanted to comment on that, cause I know I've heard it said, I've, not just this board, boards in the past, how they would love to see more representation, and I would say that'd be great, but, that's why when we vote for our trustees and our mayor, we try to pick people that we hope have similar goals and values as we do, so that when we can't be here, that we can trust that you guys are doing what's right for our community, our neighborhoods, and essentially us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Since there's no more in-person comments, I welcome anyone attending the meeting via the village's Zoom to address the board at this time.
Nobody online.
Okie dokie. We close public comment and we move into the receivable minutes for the Board of Trustees Meeting of April 17th, April 24th. Traffic Commission Meeting.
Saturday, April 4th, 2026.
What was? April 22nd, Traffic Commission Meeting, Planning Board Meeting, April 28th. Rob, if you could inform your phone that public comment has been closed, that would be greatly appreciated. Dave, any more outbursts?
Yes, sir.
The phone's gone. Um, trustees, having prior, having received the minutes prior to this meeting, do you have any corrections, comments, questions, concerns about the minutes in, on the table?
No, Mayor.
With that being said, we show that all the trustees are in unanimous support of the minutes. Let them show that they have been received and in record. Moving on to the financial report, Nate?
Okay, so you have year-to-date of May 1, 24, right up through April 30, 25. If you're looking at percentages, you want to be around 92%. From, in most areas, we are near the 92% or above. Obviously, we're going to have some below. Uh, if you go to page nine of the budget, that's our year-to-date final. If we were to close today, uh, we would have a surplus of 252,000. We have one more month to go. Now, I do know that in this particular posting, interest has not been posted yet from your class. That's somewhere between 85 and 90,000 that will be posted. That being said, we'll have a little bit more to work with, but, uh, we'll, you know, we're going to be close to zero at the end of this budget year. Well, it will depend on sales tax, that last sales tax check that we received. I don't anticipate any large revenues outside of the sales tax. You know, property taxes fully in at this point. If we look at our sales tax, uh, you know, we're at 84% of sales tax and we kind of knew that that was going to happen. So with 239 remaining, I'm hoping that we'll receive maybe 100 of that. You know, maybe, maybe 110, you know, in that neighborhood, uh, but I can't, you know, sales tax is one of those things that's out of everybody's controls. Out of everything else, uh, pretty much, you know, we're going to have some maybe, some minor things, startup of building permits, fire inspections, you know, those types of things, but nothing that I'm going to say would put us over that overall hump, if you will. Uh, so, you know, this next month's going to be tight, but, uh, we're, I think we're still going to be in good shape, even if we go into the deficit a little bit, it's not going to be too drastic. Um, you know, so I think staff has done a good job keeping everything, uh, within reach and we can easily identify which areas, uh, we needed to address and we addressed those areas in the 26 budgets. So, you know, take a look at this, feel free to ask any questions and, uh, we'll try to answer them, uh, the best that we can when we, when we see, when we see each other. Okay, also in your, uh, packet, you will see, a couple of things. One item is our account balances as of March 31. Uh, ignore the title that says February 28th, go with what's actually in the table. There, there are 21 accounts as far as what the statement balances were, um, as of March 31. And then on the next page, uh, this was an ask of trustee Gross, but here is a listing of the grants that we have discussed and have submitted, or in the process of submitting, uh, what the current status is, but most importantly is we have 8.3 million being requested and our local share is 1.5 million. And then I will talk about the I hydrant grant, uh, during manager's report. But anyway, here's a listing of what we have, um, in the queue right now in regards to grants or concerns. And then the rest of that material is just the backup as far as the bank statements as of, uh, March 31.
Trustees, comments, questions, concerns for Nate on financials?
No, Mayor.
Let's move on to old business, discussion of the LRC property that was tabled from April 17.
If I could real quick, um, if we can in the future, when, when items like this or similar, um, are asked to be on the budget or on the agenda, if you would spend a little bit of time with me, so I have an idea of what the discussion is or might be. Every once in a while, I do, believe it or not, residents do ask me some questions and I'd rather be able to give them an answer of what the conversation might be. Uh, in this particular case, I really didn't know, and I don't know what our conversation is regarding LRC. Now, I say that knowing that we have had several different conversations regarding LRC, but I'm kind of, in this one here, I apologize, but I'm a little bit in the dark as to what this conversation might be. Uh, so the materials that you have here are basically just pictures of the property, uh, the last property description, uh, that we have on it. And so it's pretty generic, a Google map of it. Again, I didn't know which direction that this conversation was going to go, or if this is a topic that's going to be dropped off the agenda, but keep in mind, once we put something on the agenda, until we take it off the agenda officially, it stays on as a tabled item and it automatically gets tabled to the next board meeting unless we establish a date for it to be tabled to. Because of all of our budget meetings that we've had, we established this as a, the follow-up date. Okay, so if there's really nothing to discuss, then that's fine. Uh, I'm just sharing what, the position that it was kind of put in a little bit when this was put on the agenda.
Well, the last time it was brought up, it was, uh, the mayor said something about maybe the income lot going there.
Okay.
We didn't really have a exact location, so I didn't know if that's why it was on agenda, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I think at this point in time, what we were going to discuss is no longer an issue with where we have, where we're headed with the current grant situation and where the budget is. So if there's no other comments that any of the other trustees want to bring up about the LRC property, this can be removed from the agenda. Are we good with that, trustees? Thank you. Alright, let's move on to new business with the bid results, Nate?
Okay, give me just a second. Uh, you should have in your packet, resolution, uh, awarding the bid. We had two bidders on the, for the 25 road construction season. Amara Road Materials came in, you, at their top at 7823, binder at 6984, and Dar Rempel was at 7695, and their binder was at 6895. So, uh, we find that Dar Rempel, uh, gravel and contracting company be awarded, uh, the road construction project for the 26 season. And so the process from here is after your approval through the resolution, we will reach out to Dar Rempel, we'll go through the contractual pieces, sign the contract, and Sean, correct me, but we are looking at June 9th for milling to start? Is that the date you hear?
Tentatively, the first week of June for milling, second week of June for paving.
Okay. Last year, roughly the same dates, and it worked out pretty well where they were to mill and pave. And, uh, what do we have, three weeks of, three to four weeks of disturbance?
Roughly, from the top start to finish of everything that we had to do as well.
Right.
Between our approaches, milling, top row.
Okay. Any questions?
Alright, with that being said, uh, can I get a motion from the board?
Make a motion to accept the bid award.
Can I second that?
Roll call vote?
Deputy Mayor Goodwin.
Hi.
Trustee Kawawski.
Hi.
Trustee Finipar.
Doug.
Mayor Adams.
Hi. Alright, next we move on to confirm the new members at the Horsetts Village Advisory Committee for Code and the Committee of Cemetery Oversight. We'll start with the HVAC committee and I will allow at this time trustee Kawawski to name into record the three people that he has named for his additional membership of his committee.
I approached Sue Warner, she's been on the planning board for the village here. She's now assists with the conference assessment. Michelle Losi, of course, she's real estate, um, she has a lot of property, she has a lot of business background. Jeff Wolliver, uh, construction and business background also, so I approached him and he was willing to help. Other persons that I did approach, they feel that has to be done, but just didn't have the time to put into it. It's going to be a lengthy process and but hopefully we can get the code cleaned up a little bit, change some of the laws that have been there for many years that are maybe outdated and maybe some of the neighborhood laws that we really don't need anymore and so like it can be lengthy process. And I will be, or any of these members will be glad to take any, oh, and Mark's going to be on the board also, we just didn't name him, sorry, Mark. I apologize. But yeah, any input we can get from any residents on salt town codes and stuff, we are all open for that too, so thank you.
Trustees, any questions for trustee Kawawski and his three new additional members to his?
Nope. Committee now.
Go for it, George.
They have a motion to confirm these three new members.
And I'll second that motion, Mayor.
Roll call vote?
Deputy Mayor Goodwin.
Hi.
Trustee Kawawski.
Abstain.
Trustee Finipar.
Hi.
Mayor Adams.
Hi. Alright, we move on to the next and last member of the Committee of Cemetery Oversight. Deputy Mayor Goodwin, who shall that be?
Well, we're going to have Jim Lynch, Kevin Sullivan, Mike Stumpack, who of course is on our chairman of our planning board, and then we're going to, uh, ask Donna Dawson. So we're very excited to get rolling with this and, uh, our cemetery is going to be a better place for us.
Awesome.
This is fantastic. We're excited to get rolling as, uh, you are with the HVAC. So this will be great.
Trustees, any questions for deputy mayor Goodwin? Alright, roll call. Uh, do I have a motion?
A motion to accept these members.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Deputy Mayor Goodwin.
Abstain.
Trustee Kawawski.
Hi.
Trustee Finipar.
Bye.
Mayor Adams.
Hi. Alright, let's move on to village manager report.
Uh, this is fairly short. First off, I think we had a very successful, I Love My Parks Day, uh, this past Sunday. We had 76, uh, people at the event itself. A lot of people signed up the day of, you know, a lot of that really comes down to what's the weather going to be like? Do I have a better offer? You know, those types of things. Uh, but no, the 76 people, uh, we did a little bit in each of the parks. In Thorn Street, uh, we had several people that, uh, built the last remaining tables that we had. We had other people paint picnic tables. Uh, the pavilions got painted. Uh, we had people in, in the cemetery and at Linear and at Memorial that picked up a lot of brush and sticks. In Teal Park, there was a lot of brush pickup, a stick pickup, as well as some mulch that was spread around. And we also had some planters, um, that were planted amongst the parks as well. Uh, so no, for, for first year organized effort, it went well. With everything else, there's some tweaks that we can make to it. And I think we're going to have a meeting this coming Monday to, to have, just debrief and see what changes we'd like to make, what worked well, and those types of things. The SRBC grant for the I hydrants, uh, we received results of that earlier this week. Uh, we were not awarded a grant, uh, from them. Uh, if you recall, this is the grant to which we were going to be putting, sensors on our fire hydrants. Uh, those sensors would, uh, sense either the temperature and the pressure that is going through that particular hydrant. At the time that we had proposed this, there was comments made amongst the board of grant or no grant, maybe we consider, uh, proceeding with the process anyway. Um, if that is something that you wish to look into, uh, we can definitely do that. The way we wrote the grant, uh, we were going to replace hydrants with the, with the I hydrant and then the hydrants that we were taking out, we were going to be using either for parts or in other locations. That being said, what we can do, those hydrants that we were going to replace with the new ones, uh, we can actually get the insert that would just basically change out the guts of the existing hydrant and rough numbers without too much thought to it, we could probably do the project in that 130 to 140 range, uh, where we had written the grant for 198, uh, and that was a, um, 20% share on that one, I believe. So that being said, if it's something of interest, um, I, we can have the water department crunch those numbers a little bit better for a better presentation to it. If you don't wish to proceed forward, we can just say, put this one on the shelf and go later. I did reach out to the grant committee. This particular committee does not debrief grants that are unsuccessful. Oh, so, uh, we won't know what the points were scored and we won't know what we could have done better from this particular, uh, grant outfit, so. Anyway, uh, just kind of give me some direction on it, doesn't have to be tonight. Like I said, it's something that, uh, if there is of interest, we could probably still do within-house. Like I said, we're, we're probably less than 150,000 to do the, the same, the same that we were going to do with the grant.
Nate, I believe I asked the question in the presentation, those many months back. What do we have for leak detection now? That, without I hydra?
We contract with a company that comes in, they spend four to five days going through our entire system and they will, they will run their sensors through the entire system. They basically would indicate, hey, you've got a leak here or there's a sound here, take a look at it. Oftentimes, or we've been in situations where the sound is so great that yes, there is a leak, but there's another leak, maybe 15 or 20 feet further up the line that is, that you don't hear because of the noise of the larger leak. You know, so we can fix this one and then we may not catch this one, per se.
Until they come back again.
Until they come back again, I mean, yeah. Every once in a while, we will have the company as they're driving through, hey, can you stop and take a, listen to here? Cause we've got our listeners as well. But obviously theirs are much better than ours. And, but yeah, it, it's possible we may not catch it until the following year or it's possible that, you know, it'll surface, a lot of different things will take place. Um, I mean, that's just one scenario, right? So, yeah.
What's the cost, Nate, to have them do that?
About 7,000. Yeah.
What's the name of that company?
Steve Miles, um, is, is detector and I, I can't remember, he works, the firm is out of Ohio and I can't think of the name of the firm off the top of my head. I just know that Steve Miles is the gentleman that comes in to detect scores. A few years ago, Bill, you might remember this, we had Rayburn. They came in as a consultant to look at cleaning up the billing side of, of it. At that time, they had suggested bringing in another party to do leak detection, just in, you know, one of those, if you keep hearing the, you know, same one, this, that, they found the exact same leaks that Steve Miles did, so they were, they didn't find anything new, you know, and we brought them in just in case something was overlooked over the years of, you know, when the same person's doing it, kind of.
They're doing this once or twice a year?
We do it once a year.
Once, is, is, oh, go ahead. Is there a advantage to do it two, three times a year, if we think we identify the leaks, save?
Water, it just, it just dollars.
Yeah, you know, so how many leaks would they identify and would we address, for example?
Um, we've tried to address every one that they pull up. I'm thinking they would find, you know, and Don would be able to give you a much better answer. Would it be like eight to 10-ish, maybe, you know?
Cause we're driving that water loss down, you know, on account of water, driving that down, okay?
Well, and Nate, how much is it yearly after we spend the initial amount? It's, there's an annual subscription, right?
On the I hydrant?
Yeah. So like five or six?
Oh, I was thinking it was 600 a hydrant.
Okay.
Is what, is what I was thinking it was.
Alright, so trustees, in my, my opinion and what I liked so much about I hydrant was, we're basically for the age of the system we have, we're doing one point in time inspection a year. We know that we still have the September 15th, 2027 deadline with the Susquehanna River Basin. We know that we're not, in my opinion, we're getting better, but we're not in the home stretch by any means. This was, we've been doing the sonar testing for, I assume, many years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, as of right now, it's probably the most reliable source of testing.
I would ask, and we can obviously, Nate, let's, let's not lose this, so I would ask that this would be an agenda topic for the next meeting, that we would have this discussion. Because I would like to have the trustees come and by then, if they'll have more than enough time to ask you any questions they need, ask Don any questions you need, but let's have a vote on if we proceed with this or not, because I, if we don't do this and we're just get one more day, one more week, one more month closer to that deadline, we're just hoping that we can do it. That doesn't seem like good planning for myself, in my opinion.
This just kind of piggybacks on all this. But have we had any new numbers for the Chesapeake watershed on our water loss? Or we're still with the numbers from a couple of months ago right now?
Don would have the most correct numbers. I haven't, I haven't seen nor have I asked due to other village priorities. So, but Don, Don can have those numbers and we can have him present those in the, at the June meeting.
Okay, I just wondered if we found some more.
Nothing that's, I, I won't say anything significant, otherwise I think he would have mentioned that to me as far as any significant findings in that regard. And looking at those communities that, um, did receive, uh, grant awards and there, I think there are three or four golf courses as well. But one community, there is a leak detection system that's done by satellite. And so that's something that, uh, Don is going to look into. It's something that we've, that we've not heard of. Uh, Don had read a little bit of an article on it a few months ago. But he's going to reach out to this, this particular community, see how that actually works as far as how do you leak detect from satellite? And the only thing that we can think of, it has to do with ground temperature. And, and with the water running through pipes, that's the only thing that we can think of. And we're about as layman as it comes when it comes to this technology and knowledge, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Now, Municipal Parks and Recreation Grant, this is the grant for Thorn Street Park in regards to the tennis and pickleball court project. That grant was submitted at 5:55, uh, this evening. We will get confirmation email that everything has been received tomorrow. Uh, engineering did a great job as far as creating the schematic and the drawings for the pickleball and tennis court area. Uh, the way the area is shaped and with the abilities and the spacing that we have and making the most of that particular area. We're looking at two tennis courts, 10 pickleball courts, uh, park, uh, park benches within the court system, lighting within the system and then fencing throughout the, uh, the area as well to separate tennis from pickleball as well as from pickleball to pickleball, that type of a thing. We would be, just as we were before, um, the only lit tennis court area slash pickleball area, uh, in the county. Uh, just as we were before, we took the tennis courts out, we were the only lit tennis courts in Chamon County at that time as well. Um, others have put the conduit in and have prepared themselves for lighting, but they haven't put the lighting in. So I think Southern Tier Central did a very nice job, uh, with the grant. Like I said, engineering worked out, uh, the schematics. Uh, Hunt Engineering did all of the, the budget work for it in regards to, these are the, the figures for the budget. We've learned from the past grants, uh, we've submitted the entire budget to the committee. Uh, we have submitted the schematics, we've have submitted our village budget, so that they know that this project is within our budget as well. They have a copy of our procurement policy, so we know what we're doing there. We will be contracting with Municipal Solutions, who helped us with the WEA grant as far as the grant administration. We will be contracting with Municipal Solutions once again, uh, to help us grant administer this particular grant, should we receive it. Uh, they have made a proposal, that proposal has been sent to the committee as well. They have made a proposal. That proposal has been sent to the committee as well. Letters of support, we received twenty letters of support. Various magnitudes of reasons of why the village should have. This amenity added to their parks. So I want to thank everybody that submitted a letter of support there. And we also had a general letter of support that was signed by twenty people supporting the activity as well. So, you know, the committee is gonna receive forty different signatures and or letters in regards to. Supporting this activity. Now, all of that said, I will tell you that this will be a very competitive grant. There, you know, we won't know how many people actually will apply for. But I'm aware of the town of Horseteds was going to apply. Southport was applying. Was it West Elmira applying as well? The county was not going to apply. And I believe the city of Corning applied, you know, so those are, those are four right close to us that have applied for this. And this is a statewide grant. So like I said, it's gonna be competitive and it should be competitive. So we'll see how that turns out. I don't know when we're gonna get the results of that. They, it wasn't in any of their publication material. Some of that may be because of. The state just passed their budget yesterday. And so I anticipate getting information on New York Swims in a, in a couple of weeks in regards to that information. But as far as the Municipal Parks and Recreation Grant. We probably won't know, well, we, May second now, we might know at the end of May, middle of June, something like that. So, you know, it is unrealistic. We will not have tennis courts or pickleball courts this summer. Now, if, if the award doesn't come out until first of June, middle of June, we still have engineering to do on the ground itself. Final drawings. We have to take everything out to bid with contractors and everything else. So that's what will take place between the award. And the actual construction, and that's what will take place at the end of the twenty five summer into the twenty five fall. And preparation of breaking ground, you know, spring of twenty six is what I would anticipate that. This is a two-year grant. So you got two years to complete the project from the grant award. And then before you can do any of that other stuff that I've talked about, you've actually got to get into a contract agreement. With the state, and that's usually about a forty five to a sixty day process as well. So this, like I said, this won't be grant received on Tuesday, breaking ground on Thursday. Okay, it may be a Tuesday and a Thursday, but they won't be in consecutive weeks. The other, other good news that I've got for you is. It probably won't be the last time Rachel's in the office, because something, but. Rachel's replacement has been offered the position. They have passed the background check. They have accepted the position and the start date for them is going to be the twenty seventh of May. So that'll be, that'll be good. Water clerk new position, that'll, she will start on Monday, May fifth. Okay.
Have you filled the part-time position in the court yet or?
No, no, I, I've told the court. You just got to wait your turn now because it's going right to the cycle. No, I, we, we haven't, we haven't posted, we haven't looked, we haven't done anything with that. It was with everything else and all the other irons that we had going on in the fire. That, you know, I just simply told him, you're just gonna have to wait at this time. We'll, we'll get back into that probably another two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Department heads, start with Ms. Rabbit.
Fourth of Monday.
I bet. I bet. Sean?
Moving forward with our ADA replacements, we've done probably thirteen and thirty three. We hope to possibly finish all those next week and then start getting the tearing out. Approaches and curves for all our upcoming streets. We put curving or brush on the back burner briefly this week because we have so much concrete to lay, but we're gonna get right back into bright pickup tomorrow. As I know, front office has gotten quite a few calls, but people think we haven't been out, but we've been a little busy on other projects. But we will get back into that starting tomorrow and throughout next week as needed.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Goodwin.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate all you folks coming this evening. Thank you for your time. And please feel free to come back. As Manager Nagel said in his report, this past weekend was a great success at Thorn Street. And I was there with the other trustees and the mayor and Nate. And we served hot dogs and pick sticks up and did a little bit of everything. So it was wonderful. Was happy to help out all of us to get together and help out with the seventy some residents. And I was wondering, will, will the new water meter be installed at the holding point? Do we have a timeframe on that?
No, I, I don't have a timeframe on that.
Because I know we're up against the deadline. And that's a huge use for thinking. I was just curious.
No. Again, that'll be, we can, we can, I can have Don address that at the June meeting.
Okay, great.
It, they only use about a million gallons out there. Yeah, so it's, it's really not that much. Over the course of the summer, based on, based on the math that we have used in the past. Now the time that they run the, the wheels. You know, so it's. I mean, it'll be, once the meter goes in, we'll find out for sure. But other than that, it's just restroom use.
So Nate, can you, I think you told me, but can you, there's a process here. We can't just go and dig a box and put a meter in there. So. What are the steps?
Well, I mean, we're gonna have to hire a contractor to do some of the work for us. But. You know, as, you know, because we got, we got to build the box that the, for the meter pit. You know, cut into the pipe, you know, so it's, it's about a week worth of work is what it's gonna take.
Any paperwork like, like DC or anything like that, or is it just on our system?
Shouldn't be because it's within our water system. It's within the village, even though it's at the holding point property, but shouldn't be any paperwork that I'm aware of. I'm not, like I said, I'm not aware of any.
But third party will be needed to do some of the installation.
Yeah, 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 especially if you want this done during road construction season.
Right.
Well, when I attended the Horseteds, the last Horseteds Town Board meeting with the mayor, the mayor spoke. To the Horseteds Town Board, and it's not so much just trying to hit them with the bill. It's, we want, the first thing the mayor said is we wanna get this. The loss of water, we gotta account for it. And they all couldn't believe it. They said, wow, I, the whole board, it was a fantastic evening. He gave a great presentation right off the cuff. And they all said, holy smokes, we didn't, you know, I think they were thinking that we're gonna hammer them with a bill. And like the mayor said, no, we have to see how much we're using for the Susquehanna Water Basin. Like John Mustaco said, the Susquehanna Water Basin, we're not even in it here in Horseteds, the town. It ends right down the end of the street. It was a fantastic meeting. Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
I have nothing, sir. Thank you.
By the way, sir.
Okay. Nate, what I was saying about audit for the outside, from the outside organization, is that? Did you sign a contract for that? Where do we, where's, where we are in that process?
I have not signed a contract with that.
Do you have? You have the board, we've approved it though, right? Okay, so it is in your, just wanted to make sure you weren't waiting on us.
No, 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 it's not waiting for the board. Like I said, we.
No, 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 you don't have to explain it.
Yeah.
But we just wanted to make sure that we weren't the holdup.
Oh, no, 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 you're not the holdup there. We've, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of things to do internally before we have any auditor come in. Both in the court and in, in the finance department. So they need to kind of get caught up themselves. You know, before an auditor could come in. And we kind of, kind of go from there. But no, it, it's all on our, it's all on our table. It's just, we just haven't done that yet.
Got it. Also, we talked about. And I know we're probably front loading the first meeting of June. But we are on schedule to have a presentation for, from Chief Sui in an accreditation timeline.
You, the first or second meeting in June.
But just in June.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. The, that's it? That'll be it?
I have a question.
Yes.
Chief Sui retires one year from this show.
That's what he has told me, yes.
Do you think the accreditation will be finished by the time he leaves us?
No.
No, okay.
No, there's, there's, there's too much of it to be completed. As far, as far as that timeline is concerned, so I, he doesn't anticipate it to be completed either. That doesn't mean that he might not stay to help. You know, the final stages, depending on where we are on it. But he does not anticipate it to be completed within the next year himself.
And I think that's why we need that timeline presentation, so we better understand where that process is. Trustees, do I have an emotion for an adjournment?
Make sure we adjourn. I second that.
All favor. Have a great night. Thank you, everyone.